That's what I thought.
That's what you said.
I forget. Okay, we'll have to do that again.
All right, I'll start by granting West Cap permission to videotape the meeting. Is there anyone else who wishes to record the meeting? Okay. So I want to start the evening with a couple of chairman's update items and really they both fall under the category of great work by our town staff. The first one is a thank you that was extended to us from the town of Hull where our town clerk, Dottie Powers, served as a temporary town clerk to oversee and assist in an election recount. So it's very nice when other communities can call upon each other for assistance and it's great recognition that Dottie was able to do that for the town of Hull. The other item is something I think was in the hometown weekly last Friday.
Yeah.
Really very good news that Westwood has received another Green Communities Act grant, this one for $210,000 and it's the result of very fine work done by Tom Philbin, who is our energy manager, and Patricia Healy, the DPW administrative assistant, who jointly filed for that grant and successfully received 100% of what they applied for. This amount is really an indication of the high quality of the work in the application and let's see, how will this be used? Mike?
Primarily 80% of it's going to do projects in the school system. I can't remember.
No, it's right here.
Yeah, it's in the back up there.
Eighty-three thousand to Downey, classroom demand ventilation and track control, 60,000 to Martha Jones, LED lighting conversion, 60,000 Downey LED lighting conversion, and 5,000 to the senior center.
And this is just a continuation of work that's been done to improve our energy efficiency. I know we had an event over at the Council on Aging Building and the shades have been changed to help keep heat in in the winter and keep the heat from warming up the room in the summer so the air conditioning can be more effective and just a lot of items that really add up and really move us forward in terms of our goals to reduce energy consumption. So congratulations to Tom and Patricia and DPW and the town for receiving the grant. It's great news. Okay, so moving on to our agenda items, we have a public hearing up first, a continuation of a public hearing from our last meeting, and the other scheduled action is a discussion of the Westwood Lodge field. So we'll start with the first public hearing. It's for Bonefish Grill and we have a request to allow for a change in manager. And this is done whenever a business that has an alcohol license wants to change a manager, it's a formal process that needs to be approved. And I guess I would start by saying Michael Garcia has been serving as manager and is continuing to do so until such time as this approval is obtained. So gentlemen, welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
To the Westwood Board of Selectmen. I'll turn it over to you and why don't you?
Good evening, Janice Barber, Town of Westwood Licensing Administrator. This is Jessie Legora and Dave Krasnick. Jessie is the proposed new manager and Dave is filling in for Joe Devlin from Demakis Law, who you people will know well.
Welcome to the board of selectmen meeting.
So I did receive the petition from Mr. Devlin and all the petition requirements have been fulfilled. The core application has been processed without further notice and Jessie has been working at Bonefish Grill with Michael Garcia, who will stay in place, as you mentioned, until the ABCC, the Board of Selectmen and the ABCC confirm this change.
And Michael is moving on within the restaurant chain or leaving?
Yes, he is, well, he's looking to transfer down to Florida.
Oh.
So we want to make sure all the formalities are done before that change occurs.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Walsh, anything else you want us to know?
Not really. We've seen his resume. He's been a manager for almost 15 years.
Right.
Safe certified.
Surf safe, alcohol certified.
Surf safe. That's right. And he's more than capable to handle the job, we think.
Well, we take our alcohol licensing very seriously here and, you know, we want to support the business and we want you to be successful, so.
Appreciate that.
Please be sure everything is done to the letter as this is being done and we're really happy to have Bonefish here in Westwood. It's been a great addition to the community.
Thank you.
So I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the change of manager request to Jessie Legora contingent upon the ABCC approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So you're one step closer?
Thank you.
And extend our congratulations to Mr. Garcia for his time here and hope that Florida is a good change. I mean, he enjoys it.
Appreciate that.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
Excellent. See some.
Janice, are you staying for the GameStop?
Yes.
Okay, and I know Nora's here. So our next public hearing is for GameStop and we have a junk collector license application. At our last meeting in June, we approved a temporary license so that we could have you here tonight. I assume that's who we're waiting for. And we did so that would allow the license to continue until July 25th. We wanted to give ourselves room in case you couldn't be here tonight. So we welcome you tonight and Janice, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this is District Manager Rob Lawrence and as you mentioned, Ms. Lawrence, due to a scheduling issue, didn't make it the last time on June 20th. I gave you a brief summary as to what GameStop, why GameStop needs a junk dealer's license and I would say primarily it's for the purpose of trading new games, trading games and reselling games and other associated products that are in the store, game consoles and things like that. Our Sergeant Chris Hee and Detective Murphy did conduct their inspection of the premises satisfactorily and as you mentioned, the license has been in place since June 20th when you granted the temporary license until the 25th. So it's my hope that you'll consider granting the license until the end of the year, December 31st, 2016.
And we'll get it on the annual cycle thereafter?
Yes.
How's everything been going at the business so far?
Good, good. Hopefully picking up a little bit more. People are starting to know that we're there. It's kind of helping.
And this is a chain or a franchise?
Yeah, there's over 4,000 stores in the United States.
So it's a chain operation?
Yeah.
And you've been with them before you opened this one?
Twenty-five years, yep.
Excellent, excellent. Mr. Walsh?
This is 15-year-old son, I know all about GameStop. I didn't bring my GameStop card, but I do it. So I don't really have any questions.
Janice, I guess a question for you. So this is, does this annual license come before the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you're in, we go through that. We'll go through these and all the CV licenses for restaurants and.
My kids aren't into games yet, so thankfully.
You're on the early side, mine's on the other side.
It will be.
We'll see you soon.
Yes.
You have boys.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I move that we issue a junk collector's license to GameStop located at 129 University Avenue to expire on December 31st, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You granted that. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
We'd really like to do this with the applicant presence.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your night.
Okay, you too.
Thank you, Janice.
All right, Mr. Griffin, come on up.
Yeah.
Got an update on the Westwood Lodge field. I won't go through too much, I'll leave most of it to you, but it sounds like we've had a great working relationship over the past several months with Westwood Lodge in terms of use of the field and I guess we'd love to hear about how scheduling's been going, how it's been working and what your thoughts are as you look forward.
Well, everything seemed to go really, really well. You know, in the springtime, we have multiple users that use a lot of the different grass fields in town. The Westwood Lodge field wasn't one of them. With lacrosse and spring soccer going on at the same time, sometimes that can present a situation where you have multiple groups trying to go for the same fields. And in some cases, that does happen, but at the Westwood Lodge field, it wasn't the case. Westwood Youth Lacrosse stayed away from that field, they did not have a need for it. So I feel come, this time next spring, when we go into '17, we're going to have a good plan in place. Westwood Youth Soccer actually minimized their use of it compared to what they originally wanted to do. And for whatever reason, that's fine, it let the field rest and it's actually considered one of the better grass fields in town now, which I've heard from many multiple groups. And the communications are, you know, are always ongoing. Any group that gets a permit for the field has to email the rules to the visiting team and then the visiting team has to come back and acknowledge those rules by sending an email to me specifically and we just keep that on file. And if there's any problems or questions come up, then we usually hear from, you know, we would hear from the lodge. We didn't hear anything. Everything seemed to be copasthetic. We posted the field calendar on our website, so there's no hidden secrets there on who's using the field, what. We share it with the police. So everybody's kind of in touch with what's going on down at that field.
Good for you.
So, yeah, everything, you know.
Why did youth soccer not need it as much as you had thought?
You know what? I really don't know. I'm going to urge them to use it a little bit more. I mean, you know, to go through everything and have this field and have the condition that it's in. For whatever reason, they just didn't have to schedule things over there. I mean, with the two turf fields up at the high school and everything and the grass fields up at the Thurston Middle School and the goals that are at those fields, they use those fields more so than they would have used the lodge. So it's not necessarily a bad thing in the event that we get some, you know, permit, permits down the road from other groups, but.
And now we've got Deerfield ready to go, so that'll be good, right? You look like you don't want to say something to that comment.
I'll let the DPW speak for the field.
Okay, yeah, please.
Mike, the issues with Severian, have we been able to accommodate them?
Oh, yes. Yeah, true.
Which is great.
So obviously, we have a very good relationship with Severian, has been for many years, especially years ago when they were building a new high school, they, you know, gave the high school athletics field time down there and we have a nice reciprocal agreement with them. They allow the Westwood Babe Ruth and the Legion teams to utilize their fields, baseball fields and.
And the flag football on Sundays.
Yeah, the flag football as well is a different thing, that's a private thing more, but yeah.
Happy Westwood utilization, though.
Yeah, well, I coached in that league too, so.
Okay, but I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, no, and when, you know, when Charlie Stevenson reached out to me and, you know, was in a bind for one of his teams, you know, now that they have middle school down there as well, I just worked it out with Matt Gillis, I said, you know, and I asked Matt, you know, what fields are you not using really? And he gave up some space, had to come back and take it back due to a scheduling snafu and the only other logical place was the lodge because of the space that they, you know, were needing and using. And just approached Ania and she was great about it. She said, "No problems, just, you know, share the schedule with me, the contact names and everything and get the insurance and we're good to go." So, worked out, worked out good for them. It was because nobody, no other groups got interrupted and that's what we try to do in a situation like that.
Is it likely that they're going to need that going forward or was that one time?
That was three o'clock to five o'clock in the afternoons in the spring.
Yeah.
I would say that more than likely, yes.
You should check in with them and they're following the same procedures, they know the policies and everything else. I think it's great. Severian was there for the town when we had no turf field, when we were in the high school construction phase and they were extraordinarily neighborly.
Yes, couldn't agree more.
And you can never forget, they really bailed us out in a very difficult time when we were very deficient in field space.
Yep.
So it's nice that we can accommodate them.
Yeah, and I have constant contact with Charlie, you know, all seasons and I'll certainly follow up with them going into spring of '17 to see.
Well, please tell them we say thank you.
Absolutely.
That, you know, we recognize how important the relationship is and we're glad, you know, just let them know we're happy we can help and I'm glad that you've been able to extend that accommodation.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Is there anything else you want us to know? I mean, it's, this is really all good news.
No, other than the fact that we're now in a new contract, which has been signed by everybody, so that's good for use of the field and I think we have open lines of communication that if there was ever a problem, that they would, you know, reach out to us, we would set up a time to meet and iron out anything and we're very accommodating, we're willing to listen to any of their needs, obviously, because we don't want to interrupt their services that they provide over there.
Do we know, Mike, when the interim CEO, how long that will be? Is that indefinite? Could she end up being the?
I'm looking to set up a meeting to talk to her, so.
Yeah.
I gotta call into her. Second figure.
Yeah.
I think she's, she's in there and I think she's probably eager to leave at some point. She just needs to get everything grounded over there and then once they find a full-time CEO, yeah.
Okay.
Very easy to work with, very nice woman.
Well, excellent.
We don't need to take any action.
No, we don't need to take any action. So keep us apprised.
Sure.
I think, you know, we, I know I approached this very, with a lot of trepidation, using the Westwood Lodge field again. I'm glad that it's been done with a lot of controls and communication and great to hear that the police chief is supportive, so that's all good. You know, if anything isn't going right, please let Mike know. You don't have to come here to tell us, but just keep us apprised that way.
Absolutely.
And if we find we have any questions, we'll let you know. We need you to come back to a meeting.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, guys.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Have a good night.
Hope you're getting some vacation time in after the camps are done, right?
Yeah, we got a week down at Long Beach Island, so looking forward to it.
That's good.
All right, have a good night.
Okay, enjoy.
Thank you, guys.
Good to see you. Okay, we have no new business tonight, so next on our agenda is a revisit to shared ambulance agreement. Chief, how are you?
How are you?
Good, very good. So last time we struggled with this request, it'd been a long time since this first started and had questions about, do we really use it? Is it worth the nominal investment? Is this the right thing to do going forward? So you're here to help us get answers to those questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just by way of history, this is something that Canton started in 1979. The initial ambulance was a gift from Heywood Sol from the Red Sox. They had their own ambulance. And about that time, the new ambulance laws came in, mandated the EMTs and a different standard of care and the Red Sox realized that it wasn't in their best interest to keep that ambulance. He lived in Canton at the time and donated the ambulance to them. It was a smaller van type ambulance, not something that you'd use for a stew, but it was a really good spare. And so initially, Canton and Sharon shared it and we invited Westwood and Norwood and Stoughton if they'd be interested. And so we all did for a little while and then eventually upgraded the ambulance to a better ambulance. When most towns only had one, it was certainly, you know, used all the time. Now all the towns that are part of it, you know, have two or three ambulances, but the fact is, like, we run two all the time. If one's down, you no longer have a spare. When the new station's done, there'll be an ambulance first due out of each station, which only leaves you one. So if it's out, you no longer have a spare or backup ambulance. So actually, in the future, it'll become more important than it is today. We may only take it, you know, normally, hopefully, two or three times a year. One ambulance call that it takes more than one sets the cost, so it certainly pays for itself. And as things normally go, if one ambulance is down, you can pretty much be guaranteed that for some reason, let's say, one will go down. So I guess I would say that it's very cheap insurance to have, if you choose. Over the years of upgrading, so that the new one that we have now is probably on par with the spirits that they have.
So how do we pay for replacing it? How do these get upgraded? Are the other?
Well, with the fee that we have, we, you know, we retain a little bit of money each year in that account, the maintenance account that we have. Our vendors are very good with us. Normally, what happens right now is when Canton and Sharon trade in an ambulance for some nominal fee, we're allowed to keep that as a, we'll trade in the one we have, trade entry. A very nominal fee.
And who handles the scheduling?
Canton. Well, right now, Canton does. It's housed in Canton.
Yep.
When Sharon's station is finished, it's in Sharon's, so post community stipulation. You call, you make your arrangement. First come, first served.
So I guess I'm trying to reconcile, though, earlier this year, you were before the board and the board approved the purchase of a new ambulance.
That was, that's actually our spare ambulance, the same thing we trade in, trade out on spare ambulance.
Okay. So currently, you run two and a spare.
Correct.
And that's what you've done for years, plus this agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
Nothing. What else do we need to know? You just like us to do it, right? You think it's required?
Yeah, I mean, really, for the money as well. And again, it comes out of, we take out of the funds, separate fund that we get from our insurance payments.
So you guys are always in communication and figure out if somebody needs it more than someone else and, I mean, do you all need it at the same time?
Well, honestly, if you need it at the same time, what happens is we do, we call back and forth. What have you got? How long are you going to be out, you know, even if you need our mechanic to help you get one backup in it? It.
You need the equipment ready.
Yeah. The towns are signed on to it.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's good cooperative effort.
So Chief, I had, I did read the agreement today, so I had a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
It says that you guys get to vote on it and there's six of you, so what happens in the event of a tie? It's not in the agreement as to how the tie is.
We get along so well, we never have that issue.
And then, just so we're clear.
Call us in.
There's no additional cost for insurance, it just goes on a general liability basis.
Yeah, they actually, back in the mid-'80s, they went through that, we had carried our own policy.
Right.
And between all the different towns, it just made a lot of sense. It sits under Canton's umbrella policy and then within the non-owned and leased portion of the standard contract that we got for our vehicles, it comes under that one, we got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion. So.
I move that we adopt the unstaffed ambulance agreement and to sign the agreement in conformance with Chapter 40, Section 4A of the Mass General Laws.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So do we have an agreement to sign tonight or?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate your joining us tonight. Go under.
Let me see if they get it right. Suppose I type off.
You can just.
We're always signing the signature page, I'm sure.
Just one, one time, Mike?
Yep, one time.
Twenty years from now, people are going to be saying, "Who were they that signed that back then?"
Were those people?
Just like we did on some of the other ones. Have fun looking for it.
I'm just going to see, oh, exactly, it's on the first page.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so there is a typo on page one, just so you know.
Yeah, just fix it initially.
Yeah. Fix it and they'll just put in the page.
Yeah, it's just, it says "you staffed" instead of "unstaffed." It was called "unstaffed." I had to check first and then.
Fix that.
Had to make sure that wasn't the name of it, since that's not, but it is called the Unstaffed Ambulance Agreement.
So I'm folding the page to remind you that you need to replace that page, okay. Great. Our next item, we have before us terms of a contract for.
Did we skip that one? And I'm waiting to get turned when you show up.
Since I started this, let me finish it and then I'll go. We have the DPW contract for Local 1445, which is the United Food and Commercial Local Union and I guess of an amicable agreement to have a three-year extension in the contract with annual salary increases that are commensurate with the same that were approved by the school committee for the teachers' union, so that's good. I guess for us tonight is, do we, are there any outstanding questions for Mr. Gillette before we approve with an understanding that there are some minor housekeeping items that still need to be worked out? And those are more clerical than they, they aren't financial impacts?
No, they're language in the contract that no longer necessary, that it's a free use contract and when it's said, by the end of the contract, will be such and such or and.
So they're going to be removed or something?
Those language things will be removed.
Okay. You have any questions?
I just have one. Mike, when we're downgrading it from three days to two, how often does that happen? I know, and the reason I ask is because of the police thing that we had.
It doesn't happen all that often.
Right.
But it was a major issue that they brought up. It's partially due to the woman individual, the way she takes his vacation and there was a no feeling that would be generated, so this would smooth that all, but it's not a very frequent.
Okay, so you stay a couple handful of times a year, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Gentlemen, any questions?
No.
Okay, so I guess we can have a motion and be, allow you, we want to have it to be conditional to allow the final.
So I move that we approve and sign a copy of the town, town's off-the-record offer to enter a collective bargaining agreement on a three-year term from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019, on the condition that the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1445 also ratifies the terms of the offer, subject to minor changes that may be made.
Can I just ask one procedural question? If this is an off-the-record agreement, why isn't this an executive session?
We have to ratify it at some point, so we could have been and then will.
I'm just curious.
Why are we calling it off the record? I guess the ask is your point.
Yeah. I would just put this, I'm just wondering why it's not an executive session if it's an off-the-record document?
No, it's an agreement and I don't believe it needs an executive session. It would be.
Why are you calling it off the record, though?
It's.
It's not official yet.
Not.
Well, I guess it's the other side, I guess if I was in an off-the-record discussion with you, I wouldn't expect it to be aired publicly. That's, I guess where I'm a little bit confused.
Because you've got a vote on it, it's a vote asking a tough question.
So do you want me to, do you want me to just change the term off-the-record to conditional offer?
Conditional offer.
How's that? Let me rephrase that motion.
So you only made the motion, it wasn't seconded, go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve and sign a copy of the town's conditional offer to enter a collective bargaining agreement on a three-year term from July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2019, on the condition that the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1445 also ratifies the terms of the offer, subject to minor changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And that's great, Mike. Keep the negotiations rolling and.
Yeah.
Good.
One down.
One down. How many more?
Three.
Four.
Get four.
Here you go.
That's good.[1684.83]
All right. We now are going to handle some appointments and reappointments. Is there one in particular you want us to?
Yeah, Laurie.
Hi Laurie, welcome. So, we'll start with the Commission on Disability, and thank you for joining us tonight. So, I understand from what we've been provided that you're interested in joining the Commission on Disability, and you've met with Mike and the Chair and Vice Chair. So is Ann Barry-Goodfellow?
I can't remember the Vice Chair. Oh, my name?
No, the Vice Chair of the Commission?
It's Jetay.
Oh, yeah.
And then, I can't remember her name, but I...
Yeah, so just briefly, let us know why you're interested in joining this commission.
Well, first of all, I have hearing loss, so I am very passionate about helping people who have disabilities. And at work, I am trying to raise awareness to making computers accessible to people who have disabilities. And I've wanted to serve on a disability commission for a while. Like, I used to live in Framingham, but I didn't have the opportunity because I was raising my kids. So, I'd like to do that now because I have a passion for trying to help people in that way.
Well, you have a disability that is one of those unseen ones that still needs to be addressed. And having a son in a similar situation, I can appreciate where you're coming from. Gentlemen, questions?
No, Laurie, other than, I wish you luck. You seem to bring a lot of passion to it.
I did.
We need help, all the help we can get.
Yeah, and it's wonderful that you came here tonight, because one thing we haven't always done in the past is actually meet candidates who have stepped forward, who are interested, who we personally don't already know. So it's nice to meet you and know that you'll be participating. So I want to thank you for doing that. So why don't we handle a motion for that one?
I move that we appoint Laurie Gillan to the Commission on Disability as an associate member for the term to expire in June 30th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Yeah, Ann Barry-Goodfellow is awesome, so enjoy working with her. She's been on the commission for a long time. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Laurie.
Okay, is there anything else we have to do in terms of order? Can I proceed?
I might want to acknowledge Labor Council's here with Joan, and you guys took some action, so let them know that.
Oh, DPW contract has been approved.
Oh, okay. You said we had to come to keep them honest.
You know, conditionally, because we know their final terms, and we're very happy.
Yeah, we were told today by the rep that they're going to vote at 12:30 on Thursday.
Excellent. Well, it's good to have one, and we know the teachers have resolved theirs, so I think we can start building some momentum.
Yeah, well, we got a half one. Thursday we'll have a whole one, hopefully.
That's right.
Right, okay. You've got a 90 percent.
At least the vibe was good, but he's got to go in there and do what Mike did, was basically persuade you that it's the biggest interest of the town. He's going to do the same for you.
Yeah, we're pleased.
So Leo Paloplin is a labor attorney.
Hello, Leo, my name's John Hickey.
I haven't met him.
That's okay, I'll call.
Joan, tell her to shake your hand. I'm not walking from all the way back there again. Nice to see you. Welcome aboard.
Joan, while you're here, and Mike, something I was going to bring up later, but I don't want you to stay around for me to bring it up later. I would just like, at some point this summer, to have the board receive an update as to what is being done for review procedures for town staff, how it's being handled, and also to explain to us what our role is in whatever current system exists because we're somewhat new. I think it'd be a good agenda item, just to hear how it's handled.
Okay.
Absolutely.
When it works scheduling-wise for you guys to be ready, there's no urgency, but...
In the fall.
It is, well, the one thing is, the year's done. The June 30th has come and gone, and means that, I would imagine, you're in a cycle. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Yeah, they're ongoing, and they're almost, they're almost done, but they're...
Yeah.
We're well on the way.
Moving along.
How to update you? Would love to have your input.
Terrific. And I think some involvement comes from us, at least used to, so we'll see about that.
Thanks for the CEO.
Thank you for coming in. Sorry, we went too fast, you know, we're just zooming a lot.
I was sitting here for an hour and a half.
Isn't that nice?
Your cause wasn't even called yet.
All right, so next we have some things we've discussed before, but we'll go through them. Vacancies. Board of Health, I have somebody, I think, might be a great candidate, but I haven't talked to that person. If there are any other names that we have on any of these, we should be letting Mike and Christine know. Conservation Commission is a very important commission, and I think we really need to focus on that. We have two regular positions open and an associate membership. And that is one of the boards that we have that does work with associates. And can they actually...
They can.
Yeah, they're like the ZBA, where they can be called upon to...
CBA and Planning Board, no.
CBA, Planning Board, and Conservation Commission. So really important roles when they serve as associate members. They can actually hear on certain matters and have a voting, right? Doesn't mean they do all the time, if the regular complement is sufficient.
But they need more, like, kind of, I won't say legal skills, but more...
Technical?
Technical skills?
Yeah.
Not say like the average person?
Yeah, it's nice to have one or two just regular persons that come to understand conservation issues, but oftentimes, just people with no weapons issues and drainage issues and things like that.
You need to have a good interest in it, though, because it's detailed work.
It is.
You look like you had a question, Joan. Do you have a question on that?
No, I didn't. No, I only did, so, no, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Counsel on Aging, I think we need to follow the bylaws. I know there's one person that I put forth, I don't know if either of you have people... Haven't been able to fill it, and I think the bylaws are in place for a reason, and we need to follow them.
Right.
So if one of the people going off is interested in the year, then it can be considered again. But I don't want to set a precedent that we're already going against what the bylaws say. Dedham Westwood Water Commission, do we have a description of...
We do. I know this was published.
I gave you like a name, but I don't know, you haven't reached out, right? Have you talked to him?
No, I didn't.
Not yet?
I think this is another one that's very important. It would also be nice to get a little diversity on that board. At some point?
We have to.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay.
So Pedestrian and Bike Safety Committee continues to have openings. It's a small group that does a lot of proactive work in looking at where special permits, where things can be done to improve shared roads and all that. Do you want to comment at all, Nora?
It's a very diverse group. We have people from all over town, all ages, people who are interested in bike riding, who just like to go for walks around the area, or have had instances with lack of sidewalks in front of their houses that have joined onto the committee. They have a lot of active discussion. They review all sections of the town. And they're an advisory board, so they provide advice to the planning board on subdivisions and developments that come before the planning board, and then they provide advice to the selectmen as road commissioners. There needs to be something different down on the street or sidewalk.
Yeah, probably is the most diverse, because I did go at least twice to two of those meetings.
Yeah, they're active, they meet just once a month, and there are no special skills necessary.
Right, interest.
Interest is all that's needed.
Westwood citizens. Okay, thank you. And the next one, Recreation Commission, we have had somebody step down, actually, who's not seeking reappointment. So I don't know if there are any associate members on that, or if we should also be looking for associate members, Mike? I don't know what the complement is. Usually, Christine would tell us if there was even associate opening.
I think there are two associate members.
Okay, so let's make sure what we post on WestCAT carries whatever's there.
I skipped the we act. Did you know that members of our we act were in the West Rock Street pipeline?
Yeah. And the Westwood Environmental Action Committee needs two additional members. It's, again, a small committee, very focused on environmental-related matters. There are times when, with any of the boards that we're appointing that aren't elected, we can ask them to do some things on our behalf. They're really serving as an extension of the Board of Selectment to give us advice. In the case of the pedestrian bike safety, they also advise the planning board, as Nora said, which is really important to have, being able to leverage off people taking deep dives into issues. So I guess I'll just summarize. We have Board of Health opening, Conservation Commission opening, Counsel on Aging, Dedham Westwood Water Commission, Pedestrian and Bike Safety, we act, the Westwood Environmental Action Committee, and the Recreation Commission. So we are looking for great candidates who would like to step up and be involved in any of those. So Mike, the next one, you've asked us to reestablish what had been called the Public Employee Committee, and have it now called the Healthcare Review Committee, because you still feel that there are items that need to be analyzed and discussed, and you benefit from having a group of people that are interested in doing that. Do you already have the people in place?
Yeah. Basically, same people who were on the previous Healthcare Review Committee that then began the PEC when we negotiated the transfer to GIC, and now it was transferred over to JRC, we revert back to.
Okay, so we can get to that, we can handle that appointment. Okay, we have the whole list there, and we've taken care of Laurie and the list. So why don't we handle the Healthcare Review Committee with a motion?
Okay, I move that we reestablish the Healthcare Review Committee. Are we reestablishing it, Mike, or changing the name?
We reestablish and appoint members to the Healthcare Review Committee.
Okay.
Reestablish, rename, and appoint.
Reestablish, rename, and reappoint to the Healthcare Review Committee, and appoint the individuals to serve a term and, even though it says June 30th, 2016, I think that should be 17?
17, yes.
Okay, to June 30th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Then, we have the Long Range Financial Planning on hold, and I just had a few requests on that one. Mike, can you have Christine check in with Joseph? I had asked for us to expand and include two members of the school committee.
I didn't know that.
Okay.
And I'd like us to ask Bruce Montgomery if he'd like to serve as an ad hoc representative. I know he went off the planning board, and I had talked to him in the past about continuing to serve on that, so I think it'd be nice to circle back and see if he can. And then, we also need to hear from the Finance Commission, once they're ready to tell us. I'm not sure the people that were on the list from before will remain. And my last point, which is not on Long Range Financial Planning, is can you reach out to Pat Ahern to follow up on my ask at town meeting, if he's continue to serve on the age of the elderly?
Okay.
As a citizen at large? We know you're already serving on the meeting.
I already gave him a...
I'd like to get that appointment.
I checked him out, the home loan position I moved today.
Okay, so, and tell him he needs to come to the meeting, so we can meet him and decide if we like him. Jessica.
At least you do it, right?
Yeah.
I don't have to worry about you talking to another board member. God, if you're watching at home, we love you.
Okay, anything else we should do?
You're just watching at home.
He's happily doing something else right now. Anything else on appointments and reappointments that we need? Anything either of you have?
Do we need to fill in the Bobbers, eh? You mentioned all the other ones, but Bobbers...
Well, we aren't really handling the Long Range Planning yet.
Yeah.
It's just some guidance and some other ones.
And Barbara was there, huh?
Yeah, she has been for a little while.
Yeah. So Bruce should fill her position.
She doesn't want, well, yeah.
Has somebody come off, come from the planning board then?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, Chris has been on, have to make sure he still will. And as I have said to Mike, I'd like it if at least at the meeting, we start within the fall to have both of you attend, so you can see what's going on in the meetings, participate. They're public meetings, so we wouldn't have an issue with that. We can just post it as a joint Board of Selectment Long Range Planning meeting, and we have agreed to hold those meetings regularly in the evening. We get a little too squeezed on time in the morning, me having to go off to work and other people the same, so it'd be an evening meeting.
I suffer the same, Mike.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, I think it'd be good to talk to Pam about getting something lined up for September.
Okay.
Might be a way that we get everybody moving forward on who should be representing the school committee, FinCom, and the others.
Do they always pick like the same date of the week, or like of the month?
Usually Wednesdays.
Yeah, okay.
It has needed to move, though, because of vacations and, not personal vacations, but school vacation weeks and things that have interrupted. And then we also doubled up when we were getting close to town meeting because we had so many issues to discuss in terms of capital expenditures. So it's somewhat responsive, but we all agreed to take the summer off this time because we've been rolling through the summers for a while with the public safety projects. Okay, so what are we going to do for the updates on fire station, Deerfield Extension, and police? Do you have any presentation or...
Well, I have a pretty detailed status update on each of the projects, but I can report briefly on a three of them.
Well, I was kind of hoping we could have a show and tell. I was asking if we could have a little bit of some pictures. So I would, if you want to give a quick update, I'd keep it to the top two or three points, because I think people, if they're really interested, can get access to the agenda items and stuff. So if you want to give us just a...
Or if you want me to just go over this and do this, and put pictures on for the next...
Yeah, I think that we're very happy that WestCAT's doing a great job covering the meetings, and I'd like the public to have more opportunity to hear what's going on. But while we're here, why don't you just give us a quick, a very quick...
So a very quick update on the fire station construction project. It's moving along. They've worked through a few issues, but they're moving along. They're now projecting December 1st completion date, which is, you know, a little beyond what they originally started out with by a couple of months. They're over 50, approximately 50% complete in the construction. They're on budget. They've used less than half of the contingency, and the contingency was primarily for the site work. So they feel comfortable that they're going to be, they're going to be within budget, just a little delayed in timing. With respect to the Deerfield Extension Construction Project, that went amazingly well. They finished probably, you could say, a month ahead of time, so because of that, they were able to let the construction of the police station stop a month ahead of time. There are a few items that still need to be done. Some landscaping got done today. The finished pavement's going to be done this week. The major issue that's holding up, actually opening up the roadway, is that telephone pole. So we've got to cut down the trees that need to be cut down. We've got it all lined up. New owners signed off on it. It's just a matter of getting Anstar, or Eversource, to physically move the pole and then put some pressure on Horizon and Comcast to move there.
So you're going to call Christine, who was here at our last meeting, and tell her we...
We've been in touch with Christine and...
She scheduled it, it's already off of her desk, so the pole replacement has been scheduled. The new pole will go in in a matter of weeks, but then the delay always comes in getting, not just Eversource to move off the old pole onto the new one, but to get Horizon to move, to get Comcast to move, and that's the part that's always...
So we have an issue with schools starting in September. That needs to be...
And even before that, we have an issue with the instruction of the police station.
So what do we do to turn weeks into...
We've been working steadily on it for six months now, and just, you know, plugging away. So we got through the big hurdle, but the part we have to go with now is getting both Horizon and Comcast.
Have we presented a negotiating contract with them?
We are, well, no, we're...
Verizon and Comcast, first.
But they're two different entities, yeah. It's Verizon, the company, but they're two different arms, so...
They don't care what the other...
Yeah.
We have a relationship.
We care.
Yeah, I understand.
Is there anything we as a board can do?
Right.
I can't think of anything right now.
Do you have one people that we've been contacting? I don't know if there's anything we can do to make them move a little bit more quickly. The first thing is to get the pole out there.
Yeah.
So Eversource is working on that, and they do have a ticket number that's been arranged.
I don't think it's going to be hard, once we get the pole moved, to then go and call Horizon and Comcast again to do this.
So do we have a date certain when the pole's getting moved?
No, we don't.
We don't.
You need to get that and tee up the other ones, and tell them that you're getting a lot of pressure from municipal officials who are very concerned about the start of school as the highest issue, but that we have a construction project going on, and this is interfering with the flow of traffic and public safety, and it needs to be elevated to a higher level of priority. It's not an inconvenience, it is a problem. So please express our hope that they can treat this as a very important issue, which I know they have many, but ours happens to be the most important.
We remind them as often as we can.
You want to add anything to that, anybody?
May I? Mike, do we have a penalty clause in the police, in the fire station contract? I mean, we're three months behind now.
No.
No.
Well, there is a, I think there is a...
With that, would come an incentive clause, and we did not put an incentive clause in.
Liquidated, there was...
Yeah, I know, yeah. I'm just asking if there was the other clause, you know. Okay, so no.
No, we want the project to be done right.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
We want it to be within budget, and they need to keep moving.
So, second thing is, when it says 50% done, and only 37% of the budget, so are we under... so are we under budget at this point, then?
No, 30 percent of the contingency budget. So, it's the money that's held in reserve in cases of problems. So, that's a good sign.
Okay.
We're under half on using that.
Okay.
If we're over half, then you said worry, and we might have enough money to finish this.
So, when we did the high school project, for instance, we used up almost the entire contingency when we had the asbestos abatement.
Right.
It was far more extensive, and it also, as I've said at subsequent meetings, if there was anything we could change, it would have been having a more substantial contingency, because we have uncertainty, like the asbestos, you don't necessarily know. So, anyway, we resolved that we had a contingency here for the site work, which was very complicated. The underground utility work is very complex.
And we also knew there was asbestos in it, too, right?
Yep.
So, we knew in the old fires that you really added that.
So, this is good news that we have moved this one forward.
Two-thirds of the way through, you've only used a third of the contingency.
That's great.
So, that's the way we want it, but timing, we want them to be diligent, and we want them to get the project done, and I'm sure they want to get it done, so they can move on to other things. So, with that, we have... The next item is minutes from June 20th. Long. It's a long night. So, I have one correction. Mike, can you look on page 14?
Yeah.
The motion, that's two-thirds of the way down, the first one regarding Westcat's handling of the, how we voted to handle the deposit. If you look at the next item, to return the deposit for the second qualified bidder, I think the amount is incorrect, because they would have the same deposit as... Wouldn't they both be $13,000?
I'm not sure. So, I'll check it. So, did you make the motion to put in the right amount?
And just report back to us next time what that ended up being? Any other changes? Corrections?
No.
John, you okay with that? Okay, I'll take a motion.
So, I move that we approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2016, meeting, with the exception of the amount on page 14, for the second bidder on the Obed Baker House to be corrected to the exact correct number, but other than that, as written.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Any other business? I want to bring up something before we finish up. Mike, you had given us language, improved language for the Home Rule Petition Article approved at this past town meeting regarding the aid to the elderly and disabled fund, where we are seeking the right to allocate resources, financial resources, to that fund in the future, should we so choose. So, this language reflects what level of changes we're...
Reflects what we were intending to do at town meeting, fine tunes meets with their approval. They checked the laws, for instance.
Their approval being...
Their approval being the legislature.
Who's they?
Their approval of the law. What they wanted to do is be sure that they were referencing the correct laws that were tied in, such as the tax work-up program, I believe it is, and there's some legislation about the aid to the elderly. So, they wanted all those references correct, and the conditions under which we would then apply. Now, they were going to limit us to just being able to add elderly people that are no longer qualified, but that had participated in the tax write-off program. And I said, "That's not really what the town intended." What they wanted was even individuals that, for one reason or another, are not able to take advantage of the tax write-off program, because they're not healthy enough or able to do it.
Consistent with how we run the fund now.
Even if they didn't participate in the program in the past, should be entitled to participate.
Why did they think they would move more back?
I don't know. And that confusion came up, so they corrected that in this version. This is the latest version, and it's consistent with what it was.
And legal counsel at the House of Representatives did that?